Good morning. Welcome to the July 19th meeting, the Bucks County Commissioners. We're going to begin with the pledge of allegiance and I will ask people to remain standing following the pledge for a moment of silence for those victims of the tragedy from this weekend.
Pledge of Allegiance. Under the United States of America, we are a republic which stands one nation under God, individual or collective justice.
We'll have a little more to say about the tragedy that happened over the weekend, I'm assuming later on during one of our agenda items and also probably during Commissioner Comment. So, we do have some presentations as we do in our second meeting of every month. We recognize employees who have reached milestones in their employment here at Bucks County. And so it's, you know, 2,400 employees. We have many have been here for, you know, many, many decades. And so we're honored to take a little bit of time and present them with a gift and give them some recognition for today from the district courts, a 30-year employee, Margaret Walker. Is Margaret here? Oh, there's Margaret. Come on up. Yeah, the note here says 30, but Margaret has told me it's 20 years. So, okay, there you are. You're welcome. Do a picture. Hold on. We have a lot of confidence in Margaret's abilities. We're sure we're going to be so sure she's going to be here another 10 years, we just figured we'd just do that part now. So, all right, we also want to do a couple of recognitions of different weeks and months that connect to some of the many, over 70 agencies and departments that we have here at the county. This we think is a good way for constituents of Bucks County to really get an idea of what goes on here, what happens here. So many people don't even know some of the offerings our county has. And so to read a proclamation about pretrial, probation, and parole supervision week, Commissioner DiGeralamo.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Whereas pretrial, probation, and parole officers and agents are sworn peace officers who work in the community, meet defendants at home, at work, and in public on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to respond to emergencies. Pretrial, probation, and parole officers and agents provide both supervision and counseling to defendants and operate to uphold the law and safeguard the public from criminal activity during a defendant's transition from incarceration to the community. And whereas pretrial, probation, and parole officers and agents work towards changing lies by working with defendants to help them find solutions to problems and to help them live safe, healthy, and productive lives. They are also an essential part of the justice system and uphold the law with dignity while recognizing the rights of the public to be safeguarded from criminal activity and protecting the victims of crimes. Members of the Bucks County Adult Probation and Parole Department work collaboratively with the courts, local law enforcement, treatment providers, social servants agencies, and a variety of other stakeholder programs, groups, and individuals involved with defendants. Now therefore do we, the Board of the Bucks County Commissioners Chair Robert Harvey, Vice Chair Diane Ellis Marsaglia, and myself, Jeanne DiGeralamo hereby proclaim July 16th to the 22nd, 2023, as pretrial, probation, and parole supervision week throughout the county of Bucks. In so doing, we honor and celebrate the dedicated and caring individuals in our community who work tirelessly to make our neighborhoods safer and give defendants an opportunity to be productive members of society. In addition, we offer our gratitude to the leadership team of the Adult Probation and Parole Department and their fine staff of officers and clerical support. We encourage all Bucks Countings to honor these professionals and to recognize their achievements. Congratulations to all of you and...
I think we have Mike Carrisons here with some of his staff.
I have an autograph too. Commissioners, good morning and thank you. On behalf of our chief Christine Schenk, who is out on medical leave, our intake unit led by Supervisor Brad Halter, who is here today to accept the proclamation for the department, other staff in attendance and others watching, or those who aren't able to be with us today, we thank you for this proclamation and recognition. We really appreciate it. All Bucks Countians are fortunate to have such an amazingly dedicated group of professionals who work hard every day to keep our community safe. It's a very challenging and often thankless job, and it is an honor to be part of such a great team. It really is. And we're so very grateful to the Board, to the Court, for all of your continued support. And thank you again for today's recognition. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for all the work, Roy. Yeah, appreciate it. Yeah, come on up and do a picture. More people on the left. More people on the left. Here we go. Okay, this is also Parks and Recreation Month, and we have a proclamation that Commissioner Marsaglia is going to read.
Thank you. And whereas July has been recognized by the National Recreation and Park Association as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas parks and recreation are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including right here in Bucks County, whereas founded in 1953, the Bucks County Department of Parks and Recreation oversees operations of eight county parks and four nature centers, as well as numerous recreation sites, including a dog park, a horse park, a golf course, public pools, an airport, and several historical sites. And whereas the Parks and Recreation Department promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being. And whereas Parks and Recreation also encourages physical activities by providing facilities for sports trails, for hiking, pools for swimming, and spaces for many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our communities is maintained and preserves and will continue for generations to provide a place for children and adults to stay active and to connect with nature. So now therefore do we, the Bucks County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim July 2023 as Parks and Recreation Month throughout the county of Bucks. And in so doing, we commend our Bucks County Park and Recreation staff who work year-round to keep our parks beautiful and fun. We encourage all Bucks County residents to visit our parks and recreation sites that span from lower to upper Bucks, from Silver Lake to Lake Tohee. Thank you.
Okay, and I see Angie Nagel was here. Talk a bit about the wonderful park system we have that she's in charge of.
Thank you, and thank you for that proclamation. It's much appreciated and demonstrates the essential nature of parks and recreation. So I want to talk a little bit about Parks and Recreation Month, which is celebrated nationwide, and this year's theme is Where Community Grows. So since 1985, Parks and Recreation Month has been celebrated nationwide, and our field has over 160,000 professionals. The services that Parks and Recreation professionals provide are vital to our communities, and this month encourages everyone to reflect on the value of park and recreation professionals and what they bring to our community. As the Commissioner already stated, the department manages over 9,000 acres of parkland, and that includes lakes, streams, river access, trails, playgrounds, parks, rec facilities, historic resources, nature centers, and unique assets such as the airport, the tile works, and the horse park. And we're the third-largest county-run park system in the state of Pennsylvania. So there's some themes that run throughout the month as we celebrate, and I just want to cover five of them. So our community grows through health and well-being. We all know that living close to parks improves our physical and our mental health. Our community grows through environmental resilience. We connect people to nature, and parks foster environmental stewards. And this is a picture from Earth Day in Core Creek Park. We had volunteers out alongside the master watershed stewards doing a tree planting. Our community grows through contributing to economic growth. So DCNR reports that the outdoor rec industry contributed over $13 billion to our economy. Here in Bucks County, outdoor recreation is driving visitation with no signs of slowing down. Some of the reasons for that are innovative and creative programming that comes out of our various facilities, such as birds and bagels, the golf course, a flick and flow, and a concert on the lake. Our staff is creative and innovative in the programming that they're providing to our Our community grows through employing young adults. Parks and rec agencies nationwide are among the biggest employers of youth, and these are important jumping off positions for young adults. Our community grows through teamwork, and this I feel is the most important slide. And I want to use this opportunity to thank so many members of our team. And when I say team, I mean not only the Parks and Recreation staff, but all of the agencies, volunteers, and departments throughout the county that lift us up as a department and allow us to serve Bucks County. Some of those include the Board of Commissioners for their unwavering support, the Parks and Recreation staff, who are the core of all we do, the Parks and Recreation Board for their advocacy for our park system, the Park Rangers who ensure our park system is safe, General Services, the behind-the-scenes folks who handle all of the emergency calls, broken pipes, the endless mowing. Your work is noticed and appreciated. The county departments that we have on speed dial, purchasing, planning, finance, law, HR, IT, basically everyone. And the agencies such as the Bucks County Conservation District. Later in today's meeting, we'll demonstrate how we partner to move projects forward that serve our community. The Bucks County Recreation Council, which includes all of the staffs of the local municipal parks and rec departments. We get together, we collaborate, we bounce ideas off each other, and it's invaluable support. Our supporting organizations, such as the Friends that support our three nature centers, Peace Valley, Silver Lake, and Churchville, and the volunteers who show up on workdays, who do litter cleanups, the Eagle Scout projects, who assist with our programming. Our park system does not run without you. And finally, if you want to join in this month, you can share your pictures and use the hashtags and help us celebrate this month that means so much to not only the professionals in the field, but to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Wait, hold on. Get the proclamation up here.
If I could just add, Friday is Park and Recreation Professionals' Day, so congratulations. But also, in addition to that, our Executive Director Angie Nagel has been appointed to the Board of Directors and Board of Directors for National Association of County Park and Recreation Officials. So we are very grateful for you to be serving on that board. I know that's in addition to everything else that you're responsible for, but thank you for doing that.
Thank you very much. And we have the proclamation up here, so you got to get your picture taken. Good job. Ms. Nagel, I think this month also marks her two years on the job for Ms. Nagel, right? So, you know, glad to have you here. You're certainly, we've made a lot of great hires, great promotions over the past couple of years, but, you know, you're certainly up there, you know, with many of the others. So appreciate all the work you're doing. Okay, we'll move on to public comment. Just refresh the screen. Reminder to, for this, sorry. This is public comment on agenda items, so ask members to, people who are speaking, to keep their comments focused on items that are on our agenda, which we'd be voting on. First name on the list is Scott Vogon.
First question, patsy long, it's in area on aging. What is exactly her function? Almost $100,000 seems kind of high for this, what's this embusman do and things like that? I've never, just curious why we're going there, not that I'm against it, I just would like some more clarification on it. In regards to the clearcast, you mentioned security setup and et cetera. That's under Board of Elections. I don't know, as a judge of elections, I think they are the most insecure machines we could ever have for many reasons. Even though you can do whatever you want with the setting up, the processing, there's basically inherent flaws in that machine. All someone has to, those ballots are exposed. When you complete the ballots, they're exposed. There is all sorts of problems. I know the program could be a lot better, and I'm speaking as an experienced judge of elections. And not only that, there's so many security flaws, including post-election, getting the materials to the Board of Elections. I mean, basically, the best thing you can do is cancel the contract with them and bring in the ESS machine, which is a much better, much secure team, much secure system. So I was just curious what's, we're going on with that, because like I said, the security flaws in that have nothing, very little to do with the setup and the procedures and how they're working and things like that. Thank you.
Okay. Rochelle Porto. I'm sorry, I apologize. You did sign up for just general. I apologize. Lisa Von Dalen. Hope I did that right.
Hello, my name is Lisa Von Dalen, Bristol Township. I'm going to lean into the microphone because usually I am watching this online because I had to take time off without pay to actually be here today. And it's very hard to hear people most times. I'm like, have my ear actually to my computer. But the agenda item that I wanted to question was the 11L, it looks like, for some grant money that came in for an agreement for a homeless management information system. It sounds very interesting. I'm just curious to know what kind of information you're going to be managing. So living in Bristol Township, I live right along the Route 13 corridor, and at the corner of Route 13 and Green Lane, our drug-addicted homeless population has absolutely... population has absolutely exploded over the past few years. I do know that the roadway inn that is right there at the corner is a place where these people, very often when they're discharged from different places, they're placed there for a few days. Very often, they choose not to take advantage of county services, and they wind up on the streets. So we have an exploding homeless population. A lot of them are folks that have serious issues, hence the drug addiction and everything. I used to really enjoy being able to walk along the canal path in that area with my family. We have not been able to do it for years because it's not safe. Right there, also on the corner of Green Lane and Route 13, is a very busy convenience store. We have had, in the last year and a half, no less than five people die in the bathroom or in the parking lot of that convenience store. I know this because I know the people that work there. This is a real issue, so I'm curious to know with this information system, is there things in there that you're going to be managing that might be able to help us mitigate this issue? Or perhaps, in last time's agenda, with the forensic center that you guys are going to be building, is there some potential solutions with that that could help us? Because these are people that are hurting. These are people that need help, and our community needs the help. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert McLean.
Good morning. Robert McLean, Milford Township. I wanted to thank you for Peace Valley Park. I've enjoyed Peace Valley Park almost since its inception. And even though I've been, lived in Montgomery County, I enjoyed it. I lived in Bucks County, I enjoyed it. So it's a great park. Thank you. 7A, District Attorney. Spending $3,200 on Crimes Against Children Conference in Dallas. That's great. I'm just wondering why it's not more. You guys spent $12,000 sending the DEA office to an auto theft seminar a month ago, which we talked about. So why the de-emphasis on crimes against children? 8A, Maximus Consulting Services. What exactly is Central Services Cost Allocation Plan? 10A, approve amendment to the Bucks County Department of Health Rules and Regulations Regarding General Sanitation Requirements. What exactly is that amendment? And finally. 18A, Workforce and Economic Development. What is the definition of a dislocated worker? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Liz Yous.
Liz Yous, Northampton Township. 5A, you're looking to retain and fund an energy services consultant to explore strategies for long-term electricity and renewable energy purchasing. What is your criteria for this consultant, and please detail what type of renewable energy you are planning to purchase? 8A, I looked up Maximus Consulting Services. It seems to be, have a heavy emphasis on DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion in their company. How long has Bucks County been using their consulting services? 10B, I looked at the website for MCH program, and there was nothing specific that this program actually does. Can you please share some specifics of this program? And obviously, what it does. So 3 is the Board of Elections Clear Ballot Group, a contract from August 1st to November 30th. Please explain what type of support Clear Ballot Group provides the voters of Bucks County, especially for over three weeks after the election. Mr. Harvey, at the last meeting, I asked why we can't open mail-in ballots at the precinct level. You said, "We follow state law for how mail-in ballots are counted." Please tell the voters of Bucks County exactly what law it is that you are referring to. I'm holding up a law. If you search 25, space, P, period, S, period, 3154, you will find the Pennsylvania law that says that each Board of Elections must reconcile each election. This law does not state where it has to be done, so it most certainly could be done at the precinct level. Centralized vote counting must have a proper chain of custody with 24/7 supervision, including cameras. Why can't the voters of Bucks County see in real time what happens to these ballots with, from the time they come in from the post office or drop boxes, including having cameras at those drop boxes? Voters could watch these cameras on the Board of Elections website. Then the mail-in ballot should be locked up with a camera over the door of the secure room, so that people can verify that no one is doing anything with these ballots. I, too, take time from work, unpaid time, and I would like to have meetings in the evenings every once in a while, so that other people like myself can express their thoughts and ask their questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Katz.
Good morning. I looked into this, 11B, I looked into this company that the county is hiring called Benevate Inc. Who was the prior company providing grant-managing software? I saw this company has a heavy emphasis on DEI, which sounds nice on paper, but in reality is a Marxist concept that most people reject. In short, it's woke policies like that that lost significant consumers because they don't align with American values. Ask Bud Light, Target, Disney. They were out of touch with their consumers' values. Isn't there another company or companies that you can support and put the citizens' tax dollars to, who just focus on business and not DC agendas? And whether or not the money is granted through federal, state, or local, it originates from taxpayer dollars, because the government isn't a business that generates a product for money, but takes our tax dollars and uses that. 3A, Clear Ballot. How much have we paid to them since we started using their voting system? Who did a cost basis analysis? It seems to me the cost of using three machines, the cost of using these machines outweighs the benefits. It is not only a monetary cost, but it costs us votes and confidence in outcomes. Let me explain. We have paper ballots that are imaged by machines. Those images are counted by the machines, but those paper ballots are never hand-counted. The Board of Elections accepts the electronic output without verifying the paper match. The accuracy testing doesn't touch the kinds of areas that are open to fraud or error that we are concerned about. Three people in District 13 did write-ins for the same person, and their votes were not recorded. We petitioned to open the boxes to check and see what happened, and we were denied. These commissioners didn't want the boxes open, and instead tout that we have great machines and honest elections, and this needs to be verified. You commissioners were made aware of issues with the machines, and you're also the Board of Elections. What steps have you taken to look into these missing votes and all the oddities that were brought to your attention in November and May elections in Bucks County? Why did you dismiss without looking into complaints and concerns? Why not go back to paper ballots and hand-counting in each precinct? Now you're up for election. Don't you want to make sure that the election is safe and secure, or will you continue ignoring, looking into the evidence? Also, my congratulations to John Cordisco in his newly-appointed position. He should be the Minority Commissioner. He'd afford us conversation and probably an evening town hall, too. Thank you.
Vanna Darmann.
Vanna DiArmon, Clumstead. Once again, I just wanted to mention that you have, you're going to vote on approving your minutes, yet you do not have draft minutes available for us to read. So you're circumventing the First Amendment right and the Sunshine Act, in which, as a citizen, I should be able to ask you questions about anything you're voting on. So I brought this up before. I'm going to keep bringing it up. If you're really wanting to do things the right way, then you should, you should make those draft minutes available, so we can ask questions before you vote on them. Parks and Recreation Month. I'm glad to see that you guys care so much about the Parks and Rec, and I want to thank all the employees and volunteers who serve our, for our parks. My family, we use the parks quite a lot. We love our Bucks County parks. And I don't want to let you all forget that you closed them during COVID when we really needed them, so I hope that doesn't happen again. I'm sorry to cause you to roll your eyes, Diane. Actually, I'm not sorry. It's to be expected. All right, so there was some other comments, commenters up here, and I had some similar questions, so I'm going to echo their questions. For 3A, Clear Ballot Group, I really think that you should explain to the citizens exactly what this company does and how this works. If you don't want us coming here and asking about election integrity and constantly saying things, then be as transparent as possible, and people will then not have these kinds of questions. For the 8A, Maximum Consulting Service, I'm just wondering what that is, where it goes to, and I have similar concerns about what kinds of topics are being used in those counseling services. 10A, the approved amendment to the Bucks County Department of Health Rules and Regulations, just wondering what that is. Same thing with the 10B, the maternal-child health program. Sounds like a great program, but I'd like to more detail on that. Does that mean you're supporting people who want to keep their babies? Like, that's a good thing. 11B, again, the Benevate neighborly software. What, give us some details about that. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, those are all the names on the list. Start with, got a lot of questions about 8A and Maximus. So I'll ask our Finance Director, or Chief Financial Officer, excuse me, Mr. Buscol, to comment on that company, what they do, if we've used them, how long we've used them.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. First and next explanation of what this is, Central Services Cost Allocation Plan. The departments, the Controller's Office, Finance Department, Treasurers Department, and others, provide services for other departments within the county. We do payroll, we do bills payable, accounts payable. Those services that are provided to other departments within the county, those costs are allocated to the other departments to allow them to draw down administrative grants to pay for those costs. If the county was to privatize that and pay a separate entity, agency, to do our payroll, for example, we would have to pay that, and we would be able to capture those costs. This way, we allocate those costs within the county, because the county is providing those services to itself, and we are able to draw down under our administrative allowances to pay for those services. We've been using Maximus for over 20 years. I don't want to comment on what's on their website or anything that they do outside of the county. They've been providing that services. This is a three-year contract. They provide those services for $15,300 a year, and they have been providing those services to the satisfaction of the county for over 20 years.
Okay, thank you. Just, actually, if you don't mind, just hand the microphone behind you. We'll just play, go around the world a little bit here. Dr. Dampson, if you would have a comment a little bit on the two items that are under your, two of the items under your office. A, which was the amendment to the health rules, and also the maternal and child health program.
Yes, thanks, Commissioner. We have been reviewing all of our ordinances at the Health Department over the last few years. It's been 20 years in some instances before they've been updated. This one was last updated about 17 years ago. So we spend a lot of time updating the definitions section, updating requirements that weren't there, that are now there, and vice versa. For instance, we shortened the plan review section, because the township is doing a lot of that. We updated the plumbing section for things that, because it's now a public water supply, and DEP handles that, whereas we handled that 20 years ago. You know, things like the bathroom can only have an open door if there's no direct line of sight into the bathroom. So really, nothing controversial, anything about that. It's just an update. It's, you know, if you do these regulations, you have to update them every so often, and that's where this is. I'm happy to answer any specifics that you have otherwise. Our MCH program, we've been doing that for many decades here at the Health Department. The biggest part of that is to do home visits for pregnant women, and we follow those women and their children, newborn children, up to each 18 months. We go out monthly, sometimes more. We assist them with anything from a home safety check through how to obtain diapers if they don't, if they're not able to, immunizations, you know, breastfeeding, all that kind of stuff. Most of them are new moms that need help with that. There's no income guidelines, so anyone is eligible for that. We're happy to, you know, we get referrals all the time, and we're happy to help anybody out in Bucks County. We also do, the MCH program also includes things like PKU babies that are born, that they can't, they can't break down fetal alany, which is a protein. They have to eat low-protein diets their whole lives, and they can't have things, you know, anything with high proteins. Literally, their whole life, it generates, it builds up in their body, and they get brain damage. So we follow those kids, and we also follow perinatal hepatitis B. So these are moms that are chronically infected with hepatitis B. We make sure that the child that's born does not have hepatitis B as they get older, and we test them through 18 months also to make sure that they got their proper vaccines and don't get hepatitis B for the rest of their lives. So that's the main focus of what that program is.
Okay, thank you. We'll come down here to Ms. Humphrey, talk about the elections. We've talked about Clear Ballot, I think, every time they're on the agenda. Somebody asks about Clear Ballot, and we just answer the question every time. So go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll try and answer all the questions if I can, and if I miss any, please let me know. First, I apologize. I have a bit of a cold, so I apologize for my voice. The question, multiple questions about Clear Ballot. What's on the agenda is for support before, yes, and after the election. Yes, that is accurate, and Election Day, for the amount of $34,850. Clear Ballot brings three to five individuals here. We do this every election, and as their division leader, I think it's very, very important. One of the best things that they provide for us on Election Day is in the field. So if a piece of equipment has some kind of error code or hardware issue, software issue, whatever it is, they're in the field roving Bucks County, and they will provide onsite support. And even if we need to, we also have folks from motor services with extra machines. We'll switch the machine out. So that's why it's the amount it is, but also I think that's a rather reasonable amount of money for the amount of people we bring in for the period of time we bring them in. We also have folks from Clear Ballot here this week, operating and helping us in our warehouse as, in this building, with doing what's called a logic and accuracy test. Thank you, Commissioner. I think we've talked about that a number of times at Commissioner meetings and why they're so important. It is required by the Department of State. What logic and accuracy means is testing the hardware and software of our machines. In addition of what they're doing right now is doing an upgrade, which was required by the Department of State. The software has been upgraded. That was a requirement, and we are conducting it right now. Other questions that were asked about Clear Ballot. Someone asked the amount of money that we have spent on them to date. I'm going to give you a very approximate number. Well, it's Well, it's pretty specific, actually, but it does not include any check requests. I don't know of how many check requests. We've done not many. But thanks to Liz Gates, the Director of our Purchasing Department, I have exact numbers in front of me. We have spent since the year 2019 $5.8 million. The bulk of that money is $4.3 million, which was spent in the year 2019 for the purchase of the equipment. So one of the requests, one of the questions from a member of the public was, would it, would it be prudent to replace this system and go to another system? I want to be very clear, if that was to happen, you're talking millions of dollars, and we already have the hardware in place. If we were to do that, also, we would have to get approval from the Department of State to switch out our equipment. Someone asked why there are three machines at each polling location. That is, one of those machines are ADA compliant, which, again, we are required to have per the Department of State. The other two are simply so if more, so we don't have lines at the polls, especially when we get into a presidential election. Again, I think it's intelligent and prudent to have one, more than one option, one machine for people to vote on. Oh, the question someone said, asked about, and I don't know if this is what you're referring to, but someone asked about write-ins. And I'm happy to speak with anyone afterwards more specifically, but in general, thank you for that question because it's a public service announcement for me, so it's welcomed. When you do a write-in, you have to fill in the bubble and write a name. Critically important. And that's in the Pennsylvania Bulletin. Again, it's just something that we have to follow the rules, and we do. But if there's more specific questions, I'm very happy to talk afterwards. I think there was questions about visibility. So the mail-in ballot boxes that are out there in the field, which there are 11, they are at the three government service centers and eight libraries. We do have staff at them. And that is not required by the state, but the Board of Elections and their hindsight intelligence has always voted to do that. And I think it's great because I think it does give our voters a sense of security. There are cameras on them. Those cameras are monitored when the boxes are open, and the boxes are the hours of the buildings that they are in, so they're not all the same hours. But they are monitored on two screens by two individuals. And then I want to share one last thing, and I think we've taken enough time, but on Election Day in this building, when we begin pre-canvassing in the morning, we have can, we have TV, not cameras, TV, TV machines, monitors, all up and down the hallway on the second floor of this building, and the public is 100% invited, asked and welcome to come and watch that whole process. There's cameras all over the room where we are opening them and the machine that they go through.
Okay, thank you. The only thing I'd add to that is the law that is referenced in terms of where ballots have to be opened is Act 77, that says that ballots, it used to be, for a long, for a very long time, that absentee ballots were opened in the precincts wherever that person lived. And so having done this for almost 20 years, as a committee person, you're, you're there with everybody else, you're watching the process happen. Machines are counted, and then they start opening the absentee ballots, and they count those too. That stopped with Act 77, which was passed by legislature in 2018. And that dictated that all ballots would come back here. Mail-in and absentee ballots would come back to, well, not just here specifically, for the whole state, but by county, you'd, you'd come to the, to the administrative building, wherever the Board of Elections was doing counting. And so that is the reason why all those have to come back here. So, thank you, appreciate that. There was a question about 1B and the ombudsman. Basically, what that essentially means is long, if a contract is approved, essentially works to protect the rights of seniors who may not have family, may not have friends. In some cases, they may have an illness of some type that affects their cognitive abilities. It's actually state law that you have, they have to have a representative to, to fight for their needs and make sure they're getting the proper treatment, you know, legally, and getting, you know, somebody basically to look over them. And it's obviously clearly, obviously a very important job. Good.
This is a several-year contract, so it's not one year for the amount of money.
Right, so in terms of the HMIS, and taking care of the, or trying to do what we can for those who are homeless, there was a, a meeting that this county had with specifically Bristol Township officials, state officials, as well as Congressman Fitzpatrick was there as well last year to talk specifically about the issue as it affects Bristol Township. Because it, it does, unfortunately, seems to cluster in certain areas. And I'm very familiar with the area where, you know, you're talking about. I grew up a couple hundred yards away, have walked that, been on that canal path several times, actually, including not that long ago. So, but you wanted to comment?
I just wanted to say, it's, HMIS is a homeless management information system. It's a federal law that we have to have this, but it's not a service. It's a software program. It allows the different homeless providers and the county to know who has signed up and what they've been, what agencies they're working with so that there's some continuity there. And as Commissioner said, we have been talking to Bristol Township. They have to take the lead on that because it's their land. And if sometimes they're on the state land, they have to take the lead. But we do really appreciate, it's very complicated, as you said, with mental health problems and drug addiction problems, people aren't always willing to take our help. But we do have outreach workers going out there on a regular basis. So, you know, we're trying and we're ready to do more.
Yeah, so.
It's a program that's been in place since we instituted between 2001 and 2005, and this is an annual renewal.
Trying to make sure what the ones we've got here, sorry. See, 5A. Get to that, let's see, 3A did that one. Just trying to make this, make sure we got everything. Oh, it was a question about 7A, the DA sending someone to a conference in Dallas. That's the, is the DA's prerogative to send people to different conferences? If he has the funding for it, you know, it's his choice in terms of where he sends people. It could just simply be a matter of, he may have people that are already pretty highly trained in this field, and they don't necessarily need as much training as maybe this is a new person he's sending to get trained. So that's really a question that we can't, can't really answer. We're, you know, he's requested this of us, and that's what we're considering. Did you want to? Yeah, I was going to get that, too. In terms of, let's see, 7, all that. In terms of the, what's called neighborly, this is, again, a software program. It's going to be utilized, this is 11B, utilized by Housing and Community Development Office. And I'll just read the description here. The software can be used for the enrollment administration reporting focusing on housing and urban development programs. It'll also be utilized to, for other programs, including state and local grant programs. We are going to be using this especially for what's called the Whole Home Repair Program. This is something that came out of state money that's going to allow us to work with organizations, I think specifically in this case, working with Habitat for Humanity, to offer funding for residents here in Bucks who need home repairs but can't afford them. This is especially people who might need, let's say, like, someone who's elderly and, and needs a ramp at their home instead of, you know, because they can't do steps anymore. That's the kind of program, this will help track a lot of that, if you want to add anything.
Yeah, I just had to add that we've been using this program for the Bucks County Rental Assistance Program for the last four years, three years, years.
5A, Extension of Memorandum of Understanding to Issue Request for Proposal. So this was something that was done a little over a year ago. The Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, working with Bucks County, Montgomery County, Delaware County, and Chester County, has been focused on ways the four counties can work together to use more renewable energy for our own purposes here as a county. Combined, we use about, I think it's 100 gigawatts of energy between the four counties, roughly equal 25 for each county. You know, this is something that we've been focused on really almost for two and a half years, almost three years, actually. This Memorandum of Understanding is to cooperate, and really, it's an extension for the consultant that we hired last year. And they are the company that's worked with Philadelphia and others around the country on how to procure energy that is made from renewable sources. Could be wind, it could be solar, it could be geothermal. It's really a matter of going, trying to be more sustainable. We have adopted the Ready for 100 Initiative several years ago in this county. We've made a lot of investments in sustainability. We have a Sustainability Director for the first time in the county's history. We have Electric Vehicles for the first time in the county's history. We have an Environmental Planner, I believe, for the first time in the county's history because we understand, and certainly recent events, I think, have shown that climate change is not a hoax. It was not invented in China. You know, windmills don't cause cancer. And so we need to start focusing on ways where we can power ourselves that are safe and that will last, and that do not require us to be reliant on countries like Saudi Arabia or Russia. And that is essentially the direction we're trying to move this county and all of southeastern PA in. So, question about 18A. Oh, dislocated worker. Essentially, a dislocated worker is someone who lost their job involuntarily. Basically, their business shut down. They were downsized, they were replaced because of technology. This isn't a case of them getting fired because they were a bad employee. This is a case of people just being, whatever term you want to use, used to be laid off, used to be the term, you know, then downsized became a popular term, and now furloughed or whatever phrase you want to use. But these are people that, this program will help them train up a little bit in skills if they are looking for improvement so they can find a job. It'll help connect them to businesses that might be looking for somebody who's looking for that skill they may already have. So it's a federal program. WEOWA, Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act is a federal program that we use to help people stay employed and find employment. So. All right, and with regards to, I guess, a comment about the minutes. Certainly, you know, with, you know, these meetings are broadcast for the first time, thanks to this board, ever. You know, so in terms of talking about transparency, anybody who wants to watch these meetings and has a question about something that's said can certainly, is free to watch them anytime they want to, and then can ask us about something that was said or something that was voted on at a past meeting during, that would be under general public comment, and we're happy to answer those. Okay, all right, thank you. So focusing on the consent agenda. We have the minutes from July 5th, 2023. Any comments or corrections regarding the minutes?
None.
Hearing none? All right, we'll incorporate the minutes to the consent agenda. The consent agenda will include items 1 through 19A. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, a few items under regular agenda. The first, obviously, is a resolution ratifying, confirming, restating a declaration of disaster emergency for July 17th. Retroactive, really, to the storm that goes back to the 15th. You know, certainly, the, so it was a highly unusual event, talking to an elected official in Upper Makefield, a supervisor, who doesn't live far from where this flash flood occurred. And he remarked that, you know, certainly he saw rain that hit his house. You know, it would have been rain, but nothing that was, that he thought was that unusual. It happened so localized, it was such a bizarre situation of such heavy rain falling in such a confined space, so much of it so quickly, that when he got an email from his owner, or contact from his township about a flash flood, you know, happening very close to him at, at, on the road, he, he thought it was a mistake. You know, it was that, that the flood occurred in such an area that the 11 vehicles that were trapped really, and I know this has been said, but I think it bears repeating, this was not a case of people, you know, carelessly driving their vehicles through standing water because they, oh, no, it can't be that deep, or something else. These people had no choice, they had no chance. This water rose that fast that they were just driving on a road, and it hit them. The, we focus, obviously, and, and justifiably, we focus on the seven lives affected most severely. But there were, you know, a lot of rescues as well. And the fire company there and the rescue squads that helped really did an unbelievable job, you know, saving lives. This could have been far worse, so we, you know, thank you isn't a big enough term, quite frankly, for those people. And certainly, I know our Emergency Management Agency has been, has dedicated a tremendous amount of time and energy. We had 911 operators on the phones with people as this was happening. And so we keep them, and what they're going through is operators hearing it happen and, and knowing that they're doing everything they can do from where they are to try and help those people. We, you know, we have, certainly have them in our thoughts. We appreciate the outreach we received from the state. Obviously, Governor Shapiro was here, bringing the head of the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, as well as the Secretary of Transportation to take a look at the roads. That was happening very quickly to prioritize fixing them. We do know that Taylorsville Road, Route 532 and Route 32 have all sustained pretty sizable damage. And so they're, they, you know, as of Sunday, they had already prioritized or had a rough prioritization of what would get fixed first and where they'd focus. We did an inventory, thank you to General Services of County Bridges in the area. Thankfully, they're, you know, in good shape. But we want to thank, certainly, we had outreach, as you, as you probably saw. Senator Fetterman was here, his office extended. Any efforts they could to help, Senator Casey was here. I received an email from the White House as well, asking if there was anything they could do. So thank all of them for their outreach. That happened just, you know, within 24 hours. You know, we were getting connections from all those agencies, so, and departments, and so we thank them. I'm planning on saying a little bit more during my comments, and I don't know if other Commissioners want to make a comment about this specific resolution, just ratifying this disaster emergency. This is something that will allow us to now pursue state funds to reimburse us. The townships, lower and upper Makefield have both also passed disaster declarations, so they also can have access to funding at the state level. And this is how this works. You have some kind of a, an issue, you know, certainly nothing like this before, but if a local government can handle the damage that's happened, then they can handle it. If they can't, then they ask for state aid, and that's when they declare an emergency. If this gets to a point where the state can't handle it, certainly think about hurricanes and things like that, then you apply for federal disaster relief. So that's, you work your way up the ladder. So, any other comments?
I guess I would just want to add that this incident gave us, as commissioners, yet another peek at the amazing work that happens from 911 all the way to the, the rescue efforts. This was a horrible situation. It may have been the worst that I know I've ever seen since I've been here. But it placed so many of our rescue responders at, at risk, physically, emotionally, and yet they went in there and they saved lives, and they went to try to rescue people at the drop of a hat. They didn't even think about it. I always think that Mr. Rogers said, "Look for the helpers," and they're always there, and we take them for granted. We don't always say, "Thank you." But these people are the most amazing selfless people I have ever seen. And yet another days of watching them, and I am, I am just so grateful, and they are in my thoughts and prayers all the time for what they do.
All right, so we'll take a, a motion to approve item 20 on the regular agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item 21. That's a rough, a little bit of a rough segue, I apologize for that. But item 21 is, we're going to have Angie Nagle come up from our Park and Rec, our Park and Recreation Director. She's bringing Karen Ogden from the Bucks County Conservation District with her to talk about a grant that is going to help us deal with invasive species on Lake Towy in Upper Bucks. Good, Angie?
Thank you. So this resolution seeks to have the county commissioners accept the $7,500 mini grant awarded by the National, by National Lands. National Lands receives funds from the Community Conservation Partnerships Program under, under DCNR. The county, in partnership with the Conservation District, will complete a project to mitigate invasive species on Lake Towy. And I'm joined today by Karen Ogden and Logan Freed, who's an intern with the District. And I'm joined today by Karen Ogden and Logan Freed, who's an intern with the district this summer. So.
Thank you. First, following on that last resolution and declaration, I just, you know, want to comment that the Conservation District, you know, of course, water resources is one of our things and what happened in Upper Makefield was deeply disturbing to all of us. And again, the rescue efforts and the aftermath, we just have to show that we're there to support in whatever way we can. Which, so, transition to Lake Tohee with the Declaration about Parks and Recreation Month, Lake Tohee is really, as I was thinking about, an example of working together for the ecological health, for community, public use, and then for partnering. Because this is an effort that's been going on, this is the 14th year of active management of an invasive aquatic species called water chestnut. On the slide, if you can see, I just wanted to point out the progress that's been made. It's great when you can actually have a photo that shows good things happening. The top left photo was taken in the summer of 2018 of, you know, from the imagery we have available. You can see that from, you know, midway from where the boat launches north, you really couldn't get a boat, canoe, kayak, anything through there because this plant had choked off the water surface. And then, the next picture to the right was from last summer after 13 years of treatment. And you can see in the lower pictures, bottom left, is what it would look like if you put your canoe in a body of water that was infested with water chestnut. And top right shows what it looks like after we've done our work. So, we've been working with the county to get cooperative funding from a variety of grant sources for both chemical and hand pooling treatment of the lake to get the water chestnut out. So, since 2018, we've received funds to execute the work. In addition to the funding for chemical treatment, we've had this Paddle with a Purpose event, which we'll touch on at my last slide. But I just wanted to mention, we've got the, the funding sources coming together, we've had the state DEP, and we've had Pennsylvania Lake Management Society, they're all contributing to the effort so that we can get the work done. This year, we applied for, and is in front of you for approval, from a small grant from Schuylkill Highlands, a program run by Natural Lands, which also, the source of the money, again, is DCNR, a larger grant program. So, it's a mini grant just to help carry us through this year. Because the problem with this plant is if you don't continue treatment, it reproduces really quickly. I read this morning, you know, an acre of reproducing plant can create 100 acres of new infestation. And that's what we're trying to prevent because Lake Tohee has a mile and a half long connection to Lake Nakamixin. And it's really important that we not let that lake become infested and transport the plant downstream. So, we can go to the next slide, please. So, that's where we are now. We've made great improvements, we've gotten control of the plant, we will probably never eliminate it. We would like to continue effort to keep it from reestablishing like what we saw in the 2018 pictures. So, the Conservation District will continue to do our volunteer pooling events, bringing people together with kayaks, trash bags, and physically removing the plant. But that, that maintenance is crucial. So, this year, we got that small grant. And I've also applied for two, from two different state agencies for next year to see if we can continue it with state funding. What I'm hearing is they don't like to give you money for the same thing over and over again. At some point, it has to become funded internally. So, my last bullet is, you know, suggesting that this may become a line item just for maintenance now that we've got it under control. We all know it's better to prevent the problem than to let it blow up and then go at it later. So, if we can keep this thing knocked down, it'll be a benefit for Parks and Rec. And the last slide. I just want to mention the timing worked out so that tomorrow and Friday is our annual Paddle with a Purpose, where we get volunteers on kayaks, where a trailer full of kayaks comes from Delaware Canal State Park. They've been partnering us, with us for years, so that, because not everybody has their own kayak. And I will provide lunch and we invite our volunteers to go out and pull the weeds and have a day at the lake. Registration is over, but if people want to come out and see what we're doing, we're more than happy to talk with them and then show them what it's all about. So, with that, that's, this grant goes to continue the work that's been done since 14 years ago. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Karen or, you know? You're going to paddle the purpose tomorrow?
Just one question. The first slide, you mentioned county funding. Is your county funding for this right now? Of course, it's all 100% raised. Is the county funding any money for this project?
Ms. Ogden, I'm not sure if we-
To this point, no. It has been grant funded. The county provides things like a portage on, a clean portage on for us to use and access and support staff, one lock gates and, and support us that way. But the district does not have a funding source to do this every year.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay. All right. So, we have item 21 on a regular agenda, which is the approval of the grant to mitigate invasive species. This is $7,500 coming in to the county for this use. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Personnel actions. We have the commissioners list. Is there a motion to approve the commissioners list of the personnel actions?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. All right. Moving on to board appointments. For the Bucks County redevelopment authority, there's a five-year term.
Mr. Chairman, could I be recognized to make a motion? As you can see from the, from the thing that, this is a new appointment for the gentleman. The person who is being replaced, his name is Ray Chapman, who has been on the redevelopment authority for a long time and has done an outstanding job over the years. And he has indicated to me that he would very much like to be reappointed. So, I would like to make a motion to reappoint Ray Chapman to the Bucks County Development Authority for a five-year term, which ends in July of 2028.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second? All right. Motion fails for one of the second. We appreciate Mr. Chapman's service. We do have John Kudisko's name being brought up as a new appointment, term to end 7/17/2028. Is there a motion for Mr. Kudisko?
So moved.
Okay. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. For the Juvenile Detention Center Board of Managers, following the bylaws of this organization, one appointment, or these appointments are actually court-related. And so, one is typically to the president judge, and then the president judge makes a recommendation to the commissioners for someone else. In this case, the president judge, Judge Bateman, spoken to him and he is, instead of having himself put forward, he's asking that the Honorable Jeff Finley, Judge Finley, be reappointed, basically. He's been there anyway. So, he's, his name is here, his term will end on 7/1/2026. And Judge Bateman has also asked that we appoint, reappoint Mr. Stephen Jones to a term to end 7/1/2026. Is there a motion for these two appointments?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Other civics, we have the Bucks County Audubon Society, $2,500. Fundations at the Manor, $3,000. Garden Reflection, $2,000. Potential Incorporated, $3,000. Is there a motion to approve these contributions?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Chief Operating Officer's report, Ms. McKevitt.
I only have one item to report on today. The Household Aid Race Program continues. Next event is August 12th, 8:30 to 2:00 at the Bucks County Technical High School, is 610 Worcester Road, Fairly Sales. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you. Solicitor's report, Mrs. Patrick.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just one item to report. The Board of Commissioners held their Standing Executive Session yesterday, July 18th, with staff and legal counsel present, to discuss confidential legal advice about both pending and prospective litigation as well as personnel matters. That completes my report.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Public comment? Mr. Vogon?
We all know that Scott Hogan, Warrington Township, we all know that the current Board of Elections is judges who were appointed because you three are running for reelection, reelection. They are just caretakers. They had to throw out ballots because of inefficiencies by the judge of elections. And you're getting poor judge of elections because they're not being treated properly. Last Board of Elections, beating, before the judges got appointed, I again talked about how the mistreatment I am receiving, when Commissioner Marsakli is saying, "The county's not going to protect you." Kelly Gal, and yes, you did, I will swear that in court, Kelly Gal has continually said, "We can't do anything till Election Day." These are the times to prevent it. My majority, one of my inspectors is threatening to argue with me on Election Day. This is time when the Board of Elections can sit down and say, "You're not doing this. Come up with a plan." The constable has raised his fist to me, the deputy constable's called me immature. I need protection down there. All right? I should have the sheriff down there when needed. Okay? It's going on. And Mr. DeDrama, you're standing next to pictures of people who are saying, "I don't give a blank if you're getting any Semedo comments." That's how bad Warrington Republicans act. As a Republican, yes, I'm going to say it, there's a big problem down there and it needs to stop. As a judge of elections, I'm under attack. And it's very hard, it's very nasty, they're very rude. As a matter of fact, the acting judge of elections refused to process my request for a, updating my election process because I was told I have to leave the party. That's how bad it is. They're, they're really out of line and Pat Popper is well aware of this and she is not doing a thing, which means the Board of Elections needs to do a thing. And Kelly Gal doesn't want to, so Kelly Gal should be fired.
Thank you. Now, Rochelle Porte.
Do I need to do my name and township there?
You should, yes. We asked-
Rochelle Porte, Bensalem Township. Thank you for this opportunity to speak about an important topic that I don't think most of you even know about. The topic is an encroachment on our constitutional rights and to private property, as well as this will impact our health. It's currently going through the General Assembly. It is Senate Bill 831, which is the Carbon Capture and Sequestration Act. The goal is to build pipelines on private property underground. Farmers and farmland are currently the target. These pipelines will make the land inoperable to farming or any other uses. Carbon capture is dangerous. As it captures the carbon, it will liquefy it and keep it stored in underground tanks underneath those farmlands or private property that they're taking. This is not only dangerous to, you know, animal life, but it also is to us should a leak or anything like that occur. I mean, if we can't build Keystone pipelines, why are we going to be building pipelines and capturing carbon? To find out more, if you don't know anything about it, there's a war on farmers, you can find that at the JBS.org site. You can look at North Dakota, you can look at South Dakota, you can look at Iowa. They're all fighting these carbon capture pipelines. But today, I'm asking everyone to look at it. It's Senate Bill 831. You need to call your senators, tell them that you oppose it, I mean, if you stand for life because carbon is a natural life source. And then, call your House of Representatives because I'm sure there's going to be some kind of carbon companion bill that will also encroach upon our constitutional and private property rights as well as, as our health. So, thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Lisa Van Deal.
Lisa Van Deal, Bristol Township. Thank you for the opportunity to come up and speak in front of you. I know in previous commissioners' meetings, questions about the voter rolls have been raised. And I know that you've explained in the past that in order to get inactive voters stricken from the rolls, it takes time, could be upwards of 10 years. So, I just came to present, this here is from a recent copy of our voter rolls. We have, right now, over 4,000, in fact, 4,080 voters on this list, who the last time they voted was 2010 or earlier. And as I take a look at that list, of that 4,080 voters, 2,868 of them are still listed as active. I don't understand how they can still be listed as active if it's been that long since they voted. In fact, on this list, 504 people on this list, the last time they voted was the year 2000 or earlier. And of that 504, 387 are still listed as active. How can you still be listed as active if the last time you voted was 23 or, 23 years ago or longer? There are three people on this list who last voted in 1989. Seven people on this list last voted in 1988. All but two are still listed as active. There's one person that last voted in 1986, they're still listed as active. There are six people who last voted in 1984. That's the year I graduated from high school and I'm not young. All but two of them are still listed as active. That doesn't make sense. And I know that there's a field on here as far as their status change date and you fiddle with that and that could affect some of that, but I'm sorry, if I haven't voted since 1984...
Good. Thank you. Robert McLean.
My thoughts and those of Vody Baugham. Having seen the movie Sound of Freedom, I was shocked at the international child sex trafficking that occurs, and I wonder what has crept into Bucks County and what we are doing about it beyond sending DA staff to seminars. The demand for this hideous appetite is from cross-generational, minor attracted persons, you know, pet files. But love is love, right? But yet, love can be sinful. Love not the world, neither the things that are in the world. For all that is in the world, the lust of the flesh and the lust of the eyes and the pride of life is not of the Father, but is of the world. 1 John 2, verses 15 through 16. Love is sinful when directed at the wrong object, that is the world, that anti-God system. The world is at war with Christ and His Kingdom. The right object to direct your love to is God. You cannot love both God and the world simultaneously. Whosoever therefore will be a friend of the world is the enemy of God. James, Chapter 4, Verse 4. Love is sinful when it arises from the wrong source, the lust of the flesh, the lust of the eyes and the pride of life, which is of the world. Wherefore God also gave them up to uncleanness through the lusts of their own hearts, to dishonor their own bodies between themselves. Romans 1, Verse 24. There are some loves that are not truly loved. The object of your love may look good to you, it may feel good to you, but in the end, it does not glorify God and you will perish. So, God, who is love, commands you to not love the world. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Liz Yaus.
Liz Yaus, Northampton Township. Referring to what Lori spoke about, where three, three voters had their votes stolen in District 13, Northampton Township. How many other voters in Bucks County had their votes stolen? I am requesting that the commissioners honor the petition to open the paper ballot boxes. This way, we will be able to see if the bubbles were filled in as well as the name was written in. I appreciate the details about the cameras being used during the election season. I recommend that people read the book Parallel Election. It documents the election cheating in Delaware County in 2020. If it happens there, it could happen anywhere. There are a lot of us who are fighting to have true election integrity here in Bucks County. And I'd like to remind Bucks County voters that these commissioners are the Bucks County Board of Elections. They have the ability to clean the voter rolls as they should be, but they're not. The commissioners never responded to our response, to have, to our requests to have some of the commissioner meetings in the evenings so that other people can come and ask questions about what is happening in their county. Watching the meeting after the fact is not the same as talking about issues in real time. I bet if we had a Republican-led Board of Commissioners, we'd have these meetings more accessible- we'd have these meetings more accessible to the public instead of only at 10:30 in the morning. And I'm sure that we would have cleaner voter rolls. Thank you.
Lori Katz.
It would be beneficial to change this forum here to allow for discussions. You often misinterpret our comments, do not address our concerns, and grandstand while virtue signaling. It is frustrating and shows a level of arrogance on your part. We all want to believe that our elected officials mean well for us, but after COVID, our eyes have been opened, and we've learned that many can't be trusted. The commissioners are still refusing to turn over court-ordered documents. It appears transparency is not something they offer. Elections matter, policies matter. Speaking of such, they're building a $17 million, three-unit diversion treatment and rehab center in Doylestown. That is $17 million to house up to four people and treat a total of 24 at any given time. That's a heck of a lot of money. What type of clientele is this housing? All we know is that they're involved with the court system and deemed to have serious mental illness and/or co-occurring substance use issues. It appears this facility is to divert them from incarceration. While the commissioners appear to be in a spending mood, where's the help for the children who are still not recovered from the COVID lockdowns? I've heard so many parents talking about mental and emotional difficulties their kids are having in school and how they can't find available professional help for their children. Let's help them before they turn to drugs to cope. Show us that's your priority. For those of you listening to this, if you want to preserve and recreate a wholesome Bucks County, show up to these meetings and speak out. We can't afford not to get involved in our communities anymore. Start by attending your party meetings and township supervisor meetings once a month. Find them online. Don't let Bucks County become Kensington with these commissioners' spending policies. Make government small and meaningful again. Commissioners, stop ignoring the continual public request for evening town halls.
Vonda Darmund.
Vonda Daramond, Plumstead. Diane and Bob, you made some tweets. One states, while there's an organization gathered in Philadelphia for a convention to spread hate, we're gathering here today in Doylestown to spread love. The other, one of Pamela Van Blonk's biggest campaign contributors is a wealthy MAGA Republican activist who is funding extreme school board candidates across Bucks County. She stands with book banners and far-right extremists. Those are not Bucks values. Questions, are you aware that Central Bucks School District is not banning books? Neither is Moms for Liberty. Central Bucks is protecting children by making sure that age-appropriate books are available, just as each school computer has a filter so that children are not exposed to pornography. They are doing the same by removing two books to be replaced. One of them is called This Book is Gay. And in this book, it teaches how to use an app to meet up for casual sex. Is that something you want kids to learn? The other one, Gender Queer. Now, I've read the entire book. It's an adult book. This shows some oral sex. Is this what you want kids to learn in school? These two books will be replaced, not banned. And if a parent wants to buy these books for their kids, they can. Diane and Bob, you supported a prom that mixes 12-year-olds with 20, up to 21-year-olds, children and adults, and provided sex paraphernalia to these children. Is that Bucks values? I reject your hate, and I reject your hateful rhetoric and your incitement of violence against innocent people. You malign our duly-elected controller who is running for commissioner. Are you upset that she has donors? What about your donors? Do we need to look into your stuff? The only hate that was being spread in Philadelphia was the protesters that got arrested because they did horrible things. These are just moms, just like the ones that you're suing to prevent from getting the emails that you don't want to give. This is a banana democracy. You don't want freedom of speech.
All right, so I'll comment on a couple of these. First, appreciate Ms. Porteau coming forward at SB 831. I'm interested to see what that is, and we'll ask, I know Ms. Humphrey has a lot of experience digging through legislation, so SB 831, I'm kind of curious as to what that's about. You've already got it up? Okay, that's what I thought. So, and I'd be curious too. I'll talk to the Conservation District, get their thoughts on it too. In terms of elected officials, the complaints about judges of elections, it certainly sounds like an intra-party problem, excuse me.
I'm being bullied by Joe Frederick over here. I'll leave you a figure. I don't want to stand for that.
Ma'am, Ms. Darmund, please stop screaming from the back of the room. In terms of elected officials, certainly the issue that Mr. Vogon's talking about sounds like more of an intra-party problem. In addition, you're dealing with elected officials, the people he mentioned, if he's himself an elected official, the people he's having conflicts with, sound, at least from his description, as elected officials. And so there really isn't a whole lot of authority the Board of Elections has if we were the Board of Elections, which has been pointed out many, many, many times so far this year, that because we are on the board, because we're on the ballot, we are not the Board of Elections this year. And so concerns about this year's elections should be brought to the actual Board of Elections. So in terms of the voter rolls, the standard procedure, which is in the law, is that voters who go to different federal cycles without voting at all are sent a letter. They are asked to, if they want to stay as active voters or not. If that letter is returned with a yes, then they stay on the rolls. They are allowed to be on the rolls and not vote. People are allowed in America to not vote. You know, it's one of the freedoms they have. They can vote or they can not vote. If they want to stay on the voter list and just not vote, that's their choice. And so that's my assumption, is that that's the reason why you have so many people, including back to, you know, the mid-'80s, who may be on that list and just, you know, if they haven't voted, and we haven't received any ballots from them or anybody using their name, they're allowed to stay on there if they keep returning that letter. If they don't return the letter, that's when the next steps will start to have their names removed. And I think that's really the only thing that merits any comment. So we'll move on to Commissioner's comments. Commissioner DiDrama.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just, I know we passed an emergency declaration earlier in the meeting, and it was absolutely the right thing to do, to help Upper Makefield and other municipalities that maybe have been affected by the flood. But I just want to make sure, and I'm sure everybody is doing it, that it was a tragedy and just heartbreaking. We lost seven individual human lives. And I would just like to ask everybody to keep the people that passed away and their families in your hearts, in your prayers, and in your thoughts. Just a tragedy. They were just out taking a ride on a Saturday, early Saturday evening, and just got caught up in something that I don't think we've ever seen here in Bucks County. And maybe very rarely that we've seen in the state of Pennsylvania, where something like this happened. And also as part of this, our first responders and our law enforcement officers, not only from Upper Makefield, and again, the Upper Makefield people just did a phenomenal job in everything that went on that day and since then. But it was other of our first responders from not only Bucks County, but from outside of Bucks County as well. I know they were there from Montgomery County, Philadelphia, I think Chester County, and from maybe even some other locations. So we've got to keep them in our thoughts and our prayers also, because they protect us every day. And thank them for their hard work over the last few days. And I know there's still more work to do because there's two children whose bodies have not been recovered yet. And let's pray that they will be recovered so their families can have some type of closure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, appreciate it. Commissioner Marsaglia.
I guess I just want to add that I am amazed that we are sitting here in this meeting today and having such negative talk. This is a community that has had a terrible experience. And first responders who've had to deal with terrible things this week. And I would have think that today, of any time, we could have just focused on the fact that there were seven people who were lost. And this negativity doesn't need to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, certainly, just discussions having here among staff, people have been in this county for a long time, and maybe there's somebody who can correct it. Nobody I've talked to remembers, and obviously, we're all lifelong Bucks County residents, the three of us. None of us remember a mass casualty event like this in terms of lost lives. Certainly, we've had weather issues that have caused monetary damage. But this is obviously much more severe and more serious than that. So it's, you know, seven lives lost in a very quick span of time is really horrific, as we all know. I want to let people know that, you know, just in terms of the process, the search and recovery teams that are still out, they're actually not out today, but they are going to be coming back. The weather certainly hasn't helped the process. The rain, you know, has softened a lot of the grounds. So machinery that could be used to help with recovery have not been able to get access to some of these places just because the ground is too soft. Some of the geography itself, we're talking in some cases about pretty steep, you know, sides of where this creek runs through. And so just in some cases, getting machinery in there just isn't possible. And for the people themselves who were out searching almost immediately, as soon as the rain stopped, it was dangerous for them because the waters were still rushing and the ground was still very soft and unstable. This amount of water picked up cars and moved, including SUVs, we're not talking like small vehicles here, picked up cars and carried them in some cases a mile and a half. You know, so this is, and tossed them around really almost like toys. It also moved a lot of earth. It moved stone and rock. It took down trees. The amount of debris that has been shifted and moved and has actually made the search process a whole lot more difficult. And so there has been really tireless efforts by people who are professionals and do this specialized training. A lot of, you know, teams out of Philadelphia that, you know, the urban search and rescue teams with K-9 units that are out specially trained. And they've gone up and down and up and down and up and down multiple times. And the patterns they're using, or, you know, they know what they're doing. And so they're going to keep looking. There is an effort to also search along the river, but the waters, quite frankly, are still too high and too fast. It's not safe. And so we have to wait for those waters to slow and recede a little bit so that the search and recovery teams that do that can do it safely. But there is, you know, sometimes I know, and I've heard from some people, just, you know, a little, a few ideas, people just curious, have they tried this? Have they tried that? I'm one of those people that I never, I never assume that someone else's job is easy. I was kind of raised that way, you know, in my family. I was always sort of raised to believe that people's jobs are oftentimes harder than you think. And to give them some respect as they do that work. And certainly, just, you know, the work here is incredibly difficult. Incredibly difficult. And that's not even including, as Commissioner Marsaglia mentioned, and Commissioner DiDrama too, the emotional toll it takes in terms of finding the remains of human beings who were tragically affected. So I did want, and Commissioner DiDrama mentioned this a little bit, but I do actually have a list I wanted to read out of all the agencies that have been involved since this started. In some cases, there may be a piece of equipment they sent. It could have been personnel, it could have been some kind of support of some kind. And I think it shows a lot about what makes not just this county great, but you'll hear a lot of other names. So in terms of police agencies, Ben Salem Township, the Bucks County MRT team, which is the Major Incident Response Team, the Bucks County Park Rangers, the Sheriff's Office, Langham Borough, Lower Makefield Township, Lower Southampton Township, Middletown Township, New Britain Township, Newtown Borough, Newtown Township, the Pennsylvania State Park Rangers, Plumstead Township, Solbury Township, Upper Makefield Township, Upper Southampton Township, Warrington Township, and Yardley Borough. That's just the police side. Responding fire agencies, Bristol Township Fire Rescue, Brenathan Fire Company, Bucks County Technical Rescue Task Force, Bucks County Emergency Management, Bucks County Fire Marshal's Office, the Chalfont Fire Company, Croydon Fire Company, Enterprise Fire Company of Hatborough, Falls Township Fire Company, Hartsfield Fire Company, Hilltown Fire Company, Lingahawken Fire Company, Lower Southampton Fire Company, Midway Fire Company, Mooresville Fire Company, New Hope Eagle Fire Company, Newport Fire Company, Newtown Fire Association, Pendale Fire Company, Plumsteadville Fire Company, Roslyn Fire Company, Southampton Fire Company, Third District Fire Company, Trevo's Fire Company, Union of Titusville Fire, Upper Makefield Fire Company, Upper Makefield Township Emergency Management Agency, Upper Salford Fire Company, Warrington Fire Department, Yardley Makefield Fire Company. EMS agencies, Bucks County Rescue Squad, Pendale Middletown EMS, Newtown Ambulance Squad, Mooresville Ambulance Squad, Tri-Hampton Rescue Squad. Also, the Monco Special Operations Team, Lehigh Special Operations Team, Delco and Chester Special Operations Teams. So as you, and we may have missed someone. If we did, we obviously apologize for that, but it's a pretty extensive list. So we ask everybody to, as we've already heard, and, you know, you know, for the families that have lost so much, the friends who have lost so much, you know, make sure that we are keeping them in our thoughts. And it's, you know, things close to home sometimes. And one of the individuals who was saved, rescued by the fire, I think it was the Upper Makefield Fire Company who did the rescue, was the mother of one of our 911 supervisors. And so you had a 911 operator, I believe, on the phone with the woman, knowing that this was the family, this was the mother of one of her coworkers, or, you know, that they were dealing with. In the smaller world, the young man who is the employee here as a supervisor was a student of mine, who I taught several years ago. So I had met the mother at back-to-school nights multiple times because she had multiple kids, and I taught both of them. So she is safe and sound, as are, you know, several others who were saved. But they're still, obviously, they went through trauma. Their families went through trauma, so we think about them too. Just to comment on this meeting itself and what happened today. With our agenda today in terms of revenue, the different departments and agencies of this county brought in, should I count this first? Over $3 million, about 3, looks like $3.2 million in revenue through different grants. The area agents in aging, spending about $140,000 to help our senior citizens. Housing and community development is distributing community development block grants, over $1 million, about $860,000 going to municipalities to help them do work, and about $255,000 to nonprofits to help them do their work. In terms of IT and digitization, we are looking at almost $240,000 being used by the Board of Health, District Attorney's Office, IT and Row Officers, or the, excuse me, Recorder Register of Wills when it comes to digitization and IT support, improving their workings. Juvenile detention, about $400,000 there. Recorder of deeds, $59,000 to continue the protection of deed books that started under the previous recorder of deeds. And moving, continuing to move forward with the southeast counties on ways to fight climate change, quite frankly, and procure energy for this county government and potentially other governments who may be interested that's sustainable and safe and comes local. So, and finally, in my time as a, well, just in my time alive, I've come into contact with a lot of veterans, a lot of family members who were veterans, including my uncle, my mother's oldest brother, who passed away a couple of years ago, who was a Korean War veteran, and came to know a lot of Korean War veterans. Had them come into my school to talk to kids about their experiences. And if you know a Korean War veteran, you know they often wear hats or shirts or some kind of jackets or something that has the term "forgotten war", because that's what it was, happening between World War II and Vietnam, happening in such a way that it, blending with everything else that was happening in this country at the time. blending with everything else that was happening in this country at the time, economic and social changes occurring in the early '50s, in many ways, it was totally forgotten. And the young men and women who went overseas, including the over 30,000 who did not return, fighting to protect South Korea and keep it safe, did not get any welcome home. I remember talking to one veteran who was in, you know, worked at a factory in northeast Philly, I forget which one, and he was talking about the fact that, you know, he went to Korea, and was there, and fought in the war, and came back, you know, the company had held his job. He came back to work, and he ran into one of his buddies, and he said, "Hey, I haven't seen you for a while, where you been?" "So, I was in Korea." You know, he'd been gone for a year. And, you know, this coworker hadn't really even noticed in many ways, and he's, "Oh, really?" Just, you know. I mention all this because next week marks the 70th anniversary of the end of that war. And Korean War veterans, you know, I remember growing up, and maybe it's my generation, that, I forget what generation I am, I don't know, no, I'm not a boomer, or I'm not X, or whatever, or not millennial, I think I'm X, I think that's what I am. But I think we were taught, you know, that, you know, World War II was a win, and Vietnam was a loss, and Korea was a tie, you know? Kind of the way it was sort of, you know, the way we were educated about it. And talking to Korean War veterans, you know, they dispute that, you know? And I think they're right. In fact, I know they're right. Their job, being sent to Korea, was to protect South Korea, as it was being invaded by the North Koreans. And today, South Korea is a thriving democracy, with incredibly powerful economy. There's an excellent chance that pretty much everybody in this room has some kind of device or drives a vehicle, or has something in their kitchen, or some kind of appliance, or something that's made in South Korea. So, you may not even know it, you know? North Korea is a dictatorship that's horribly poor and suffers from horrendous famine and ecological disasters every year. So, those men and women who went to Korea did their job, they're winners. And we thank them for their service. Obviously, 70 years ago, you can do the math, and those veterans who served are, were losing them at a pretty high rate. And so, if you do know somebody who was a Korean War veteran who spent time there, make sure you thank them, especially next week, because we want to make sure, even though a lot of people have forgotten the war, we want to try and do what we can to make sure people remember, you know, mark the end of it. There was an attempt by Mr. Jerry Jonas, a former, who himself was a Marine Corps veteran and fought in Korea, and has been very, very active, and was a Courier-Times columnist for a long time, and I think, a friend, I think, a couple, all of us, I believe. He made an attempt to try and organize something for next week, but he ran into a lot of problems, just couldn't get it, you know, up and running. But we're definitely going to do something. Matt Allen has been working with him, and I've been talking with him as well, to make sure that we do something to commemorate the end of this war, the end of the Korean War. There is a monument on, outside, in this building, outside of this building, if you want to stop by there, especially next week, might be a nice time to lay flowers. 27th, I believe, is the date that marks the end of the war. So, thank you, everybody, for their time and for their energy putting this meeting together. I will end this intermission to adjourn.
Stand move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.